Good evening, welcome to our June 22 regular town board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this country, and to the nation under God, and to the principle of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Couple of announcements and then if anybody else does, that's great. With regard to our proposed zoning amendment that we have in front of us, I think we still need to complete our secret process. We have to go over parts two and three of our EAF and assessment and we have to need a determination of significance. We'll probably schedule that for our next meeting on July 13th and hoping at that time we can have a new version of the law laid in front of the town board members and we will schedule a vote if that's what we want to do at the next meeting, but that's our plan. Also tomorrow night we have a joint town and village meeting here at 6:00 PM to discuss the dissolution of the town fire protection district and our next steps. We've invited all the fire departments and commissioners and the village will be in attendance. I'm assuming we will all be here, so we'll see you then. Does anybody else have anything to? Okay. Approval of prior minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve prior minutes of May 11, 2015. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes of our regular town board meeting of May 26, 2015. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And I'll make a motion for our June 3 special town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Are there any committee or liaison reports?
On workforce housing, I just came from a meeting where we met with a possible consultant and talked to us. He's helping to crystallize our thinking and at some point the committee will come with some recommendations.
Anybody else?
As far as the trails go, we're just waiting for the weather to have four dry days in a row forecast, so we can start cutting those. The, it'll be the kiosk, I'm gonna do that, level that thing out too, that base that Bob Wills needs. The grant for the consolidation of the highway and maintenance department's been accepted and the possible grant for the dissolution of the fire district has been accepted.
Yes, we got notice from the county, so thanks for doing that, Bruce.
Elizabeth, I also wanted to talk about where we are with the asbestos projects and the heating project. I don't know if you want to do it now or later on.
What do we want to do?
In the meeting. Do it now. Basically, the asbestos has been removed from the furnace room. There were three spots in the town hall where there was some asbestos near control valves, near regulators, control valves. That was pointed out and that has been removed. The bids on the furnace, excuse me, are due Wednesday, so we should have that in here. We do have a schedule for award a few days after and then a contract, there was a draft contract, that presumably that schedule was before the next meeting and work was supposed to start around July 10. We'll see what bids come in, whether we want to have an emergency meeting or let it slip for a few days. One wrinkle has developed so far is apparently Weston and Sampson sent an email after the asbestos people packed up and left saying there's another spot.
How did they miss that? Where is the other spot?
It's down in the basement. So we'll see, I'm not sure. I wouldn't recommend we do anything right now, let the, in the award, let's see what the contractor says. It may not be a problem. Let's see, but Alan and I, we have looked in the furnace room, it was pretty good. The boiler is in pieces and will be taken out Friday. Pieces, apparently Bobby has arranged with the town tobacco, he will get the pieces somehow near the exit door in the back hole, lift it up and put it in his truck and he will take it, sell it in Kingston, so hopefully we'll get the money out of it.
Okay. Thank you. One other thing, Bruce and I had a meeting with Warren and Heath, the mayor, and Heit Sowers, trustee in the village and their attorney, to discuss possible water, forming a water district in the town, if town water district users that use the village system, the town is going, the village is going through a major infrastructure improvement project and in order for them to get bonding, they might need districts created. It's a huge, it could be a very, you know, lengthy process, but of course we'll work with them. This is in the best interest of getting their infrastructure replaced. Also at that meeting, we discussed our fire department meeting and the mayor and I met again on Saturday and they graciously have, with regard to the hydrants, we've come to an agreement. They, they're not charging us for the ones that don't have pressure and they're also waiving our water charges for the year and will work with us to lower our bill at a municipal non-business rate. So we're grateful for the compromise and it helps everyone and we're moving ahead.
But this is a proposal that will be presented to the town board.
I think it's a, I've just presented it. They've offered us a compromise, I think we should take it.
You want to spell out what the terms of the compromise are? Do you want to vote on it?
I don't know that it needs a vote. It's a, it's an invoice we have and they're offering to discount it and waive it, so I don't know that a word action is required because it's a discount on something we've already approved.
It will come up when we have this person.
Sure. Do you think it's a credit?
At that point, we can weigh in.
Sure. But do you want to weigh in now? Do you not?
Well, I don't know enough about, about the proposal. I don't know if Elaine has heard it, Alan.
I'm just telling you right now, they've, they've offered us a discount on the hydrants that don't work. We're grateful for that.
So what is the discount?
They're not charging us for three hydrants.
Three hydrants?
And they're not charging us for the water from August 2014 through the end of this year, since we did not have it budgeted. All the water that wasn't in our budget for the highway department and they'll work with us on a lower municipal rate for the highway department, so.
No action?
Moving forward.
No questions?
Okay. Any other announcements or committee reports? We have a presentation or a committee report from Melanie Moore, our chair of the Historic Structures Committee.
Good evening. I know that you have in your book a letter that we received from SHPO, State of our Preservation House. A little bit of background, the committee worked and developed a draft which was sent up to SHPO and the letter that was received that was four, the two you already had it. They were not positively inclined toward the draft that was sent out. They did not feel that it came close enough to the model of strike preservation law to be useful. So our committee met and reviewed the letter and the committee would like to continue working. It was the unanimous consensus of the committee that they would like to see something in place in that. At this point, we're not prepared to say what that would be, but it was the unanimous consensus of the committee that they want to continue to work toward achieving some preservation ordinance or law. It was also the consensus of the majority of the committee that they would like to see it strengthened. So we're proposing that we move ahead in collaboration with Preservation League, which is a not-for-profit preservation organization that was a partner with SHPO in developing the model law and largely responsible for the definitions section. They have offered their assistance in working with us to try and see how we can improve the draft ordinance that was developed and get back to you and others with a draft in the future. So that's Sharon and Kathy here. Is there anything I've missed that we should add to that?
I think we should mention that there, the committee had also suggested a survey of other communities.
Correct. We're going to be reaching out to other communities through the Preservation League to see, again, we've looked at them before, but we'll go back and look again to see where ours differs from other communities and how we might look, like what's been successful elsewhere to see how we can get this to be in better state. We're just going to keep plodding ahead until we bring something back to you and hope we can come back to you with a good document. There's no money involved, it's free as you know, so we'll just be plugging along with this. Unless you have any questions, we'll come to you with answers.
No, I don't think so. Anybody?
Isn't the crux of the issue as the letter, this historic preservation committee is advisory only or has the power to say no to somebody who doesn't have to go before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals that with respect to those two bodies, the committee would make a recommendation and they ultimately have the authority. Isn't that the crux of the issue?
I think it was one of the concerns raised by SHPO. I'm not sure if it was all the concerns raised by SHPO. If you can reread the letter, they were concerned with the tone of the law, they were concerned with the fact that it come across as negative. We need to go back and look at that. And the question is raised, if it's, if it's a law, then one surmises that it comes with some enforceability. If there's no enforceability in the law, then we have to go back to the drawing board and ask ourselves whether or not it's really a law we need, because those two things seem fairly better. So that's what we're going to be exploring. I'm not prepared to say what's the crux of it, because I think there were multiple issues raised.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for coming. I would like to make a motion for, hold on, Resolution 2015-156, our preliminary abstract voucher 606 to 691, 62 checks totaling $104,818.81. May I have a second?
Right.
Discussion further to this, I'd like to ask you, I'm going to make a motion if you agree to amend this to include the payment to the village for the hydrants, $5,700 minus the three hydrants that they are not charging us for, so it's an additional $4,800, which would bring the total of this abstract to 109,618.81. Any questions about that?
This agreement with the, for flat, reduce the writing?
I think this resolution will do it. We can certainly get it in writing, but they're taking three off, they're not charging us for three that don't have pressure and moving forward, either the creation of this water district or the dissolution of the fire protection district will be covering all the hydrants.
Okay, because yeah, the voucher will cover the amount, but it won't be talked about a lower municipal rate.
That's not a part of this amendment.
And not charging.
That's not a part of this amendment. This is only hydrants.
No, but I thought the deal was.
This amendment is only to pay them for the hydrants.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have, we paid them for the water already, they're going to give us a credit unless we don't want to accept it and we're going to negotiate farther on a lower municipal rate. It's not anything we're doing tonight. This just came up this weekend, Heath and I were together this weekend, hanging out and.
Right, and same thing with no payment for the August 2020.
He'll be issuing us a credit for that. We've paid for it already. The only thing that I'm asking is for an amendment to this voucher to add an additional $4,800 payable to the Reinbeck Water Department, so I'm amending this abstract to 109,618.81. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor of the original paying the abstract vouchers?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2015-157, our preliminary capital projects accounts payable, abstracts, five checks totaling $2,200, 22, 10, and 80 cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-158, amending the 2013, I'm assuming that means 2015 planning and zoning fee schedule. May I have a second, or a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Right.
Any discussion?
Right, it says 2013 is as when we last amended the schedule. I passed it out at the last meeting. I have heard no feedback from anybody, from anybody else as.
No, the increases are very, very small.
The ZBA was happy.
Pardon me?
The ZBA was happy.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2015-159, authorizing the highway superintendent to advertise for the 2016 materials bid. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Any discussion?
This is apparently something we do every year that is required and just to advertise.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution, I'll make a motion for Resolution 2015-160, town cemetery use application for filming. May I have a second?
Second.
As discussed, I think in one of our special meetings, Beautiful Darkness would like to film in our cemetery. We asked them to meet the same criteria as the last film shoot, which they've done and so we're here to approve their, their shoot for June 29th. Any further discussion?
They're going to pay us $1,500?
Yes, they are. I think we have the check already, it's right in the packet. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Any new business?
Two of the, or three of the people that we hired for positions in camp and the order on the pool have resigned.
They get a better job?
They got a better job, yeah. So here's a resolution to hire other people. One of the salaries is, one of the rates paid is $15 an hour for one of the head coaches. This is a gal that's making $25 an hour at another job, so we think that 15 is what's going to take together, or what we know it, that's what's going to take together, so. This has to be done immediately because otherwise we're absolutely without a head coach for the swim team.
Okay. Any, did we bring this to the floor? Did we?
So I move that we.
Resolution 2015.
I move Resolution 2015-160.
I'll second it.
Thank you. The other fact is this is not going to blow the budget, so.
Wait, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yes, I have, actually I have a resolution before all of you, a contract with Jeff Farber for the water taxi. He was here last month and presented his.
Did you want to bring this to the floor?
Yes.
Make Resolution 2015-162, may I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So Jeff Farber was here last month and talked about the possibility of his proposal for a water ferry service in Reinbeck, going from Reinbeck to the water, the Rhonda. It would be three days a week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We had a pretty extensive discussion with him at the time about the damage to the dock and some other issues which have been discussed and resolved and our attorney, our town attorney has worked closely with Jeff to craft a contract based on the former contract the town had for water ferry service with some minor modifications to tweak it toward, for Jeff's uses. So that's what's before you right now is the final contract after Jeff Farber from the water taxi service and Warren Plancy, our town attorney, have gone back and forth.
This is four days a week, not three.
Is it four, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah, it's, it's usage from noon till 7:30 or 9:30. 11, it goes 11:30 on Sundays.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, okay.
Four days.
So it's four days. And so in the loading times, it's only like 10 to 15 minutes per trip, so he's looking to put a signage at his own cost, that would say from, from those times that he would be operating for just that 10 to 15 minutes that other people couldn't load on that dock. There are other docks they can load on, but this, during those times, it would be exclusively for the water taxi service.
Has this been vetted to the public? I mean, that, my concern is that it'll time, I just got it, it's late, so I skimmed it. Two questions, are they, do they need to, are we guaranteeing them a usable dock? The dock's not in great repair.
Well, we discussed that. That was the meeting that we had with them.
Yes, I remember.
The doctor, Bobby and Joe, when we were down there, and Jeff, who also took a look at how to knowledge of docks, said they would be good for this year. The problem would be next year.
I'm just saying, does this contract guarantee them a usable dock?
Yeah, I think the contract allows them to use the current dock that's down there.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, are we guaranteeing them that the dock will make it through the summer and if it doesn't, what's our?
They, well, they're going to repair the dock.
Okay, so they'll repair it.
Yeah, they've already agreed to repair it.
I guess I got a couple of problems, three problems on the draft.
Okay.
You said that they're going to put up signage, but the last page says signage provided by the town will be placed.
Oh.
So that has to change. The date of the use of.
So Joe, I'm sorry, let me go back for one moment. Tell me what page you're on, because I want to see behind this.
The last scheduled day.
The schedule D. Okay, and I think that was what.
Last line.
Okay, I wanted to look at. So signage provided by the town will be placed on the dock, okay. Well, let me ask you something before I contact him. I mean, is it possible for us to do that or do you think it would be better for him to do it?
Or anything, why should we take that on? You know what he's going to do.
Okay.
But again, I think we should contact Warren. This is what we want in our.
Oh, absolutely, but I was just asking that question first.
Wouldn't get into the negotiation. The other thing is paragraph eight says that the period is through November 15. We had talked about October 15. That's when we take the dock out of the water. I don't know why Warren did November 15, I wrote to him.
Okay.
And I guess the rest of that paragraph I don't like. It's an automatic renewal for successive years unless we do something. And we clearly told him that we didn't think the dock would last more than a year, so.
So you're more comfortable revisiting this next year?
Yeah, and I would take out the automatic renewal.
Okay.
The other thing is just reading it.
It says, it says during the course, it is the licensee who will be responsible for keeping the dock and their repair, basically, it's paragraph ten.
Where are you looking at, the licensee?
The number, paragraph 10, maintenance or repair, basically says we keep.
Licensee, licensee shall be responsible, maintain all vessels and equipment.
Shall be responsible for maintaining, and we're married, maintenance or repair of the Reinbeck dock and responsible for repairing any damage to the dock as a result of licensee's operation.
Okay, so that's actually covered there, so then that above part really is just probably an error, I assume, just as to.
The owner makes no representations concerning the condition of the dock or the water front, so.
Say that again?
The last sentence is right, this is basically.
The owner makes no representations concerning the condition of the dock or the water front, so it's, oh, so in other words, they would be the ones to decide what needs to be done or how?
I just, I have concerns about the dock being tied up for the public because I know that we had a lot of, you know, a lot of concern about that the last time we did this. Bruce, what's your record?
It does say though that they won't block it and they'll promptly leave it once they load the people on, I saw that.
Bruce, what's your recollection of this?
The dock was built for ferry service. It was built by the, the previous vendor or by the city of Kingston for the previous vendor. It's intended for ferry.
No, but last.
No, what's your, what, didn't, wasn't the public, didn't we get some blowback from the public about?
No, no, when we didn't want to put it in, that's when they got upset.
So if you look at paragraph 15, it says, other than when loading, unloading passengers are scheduled.
Shall not utilize or otherwise block.
What?
Yeah, it says, yeah, you're right, not utilize or otherwise block.
Yeah, I think that was put in, I don't know if that was in the previous one or not, so. We have it covered, it just has to be enforced and I guess, and I can talk to Warren, I'd like to see a, a stronger thing of solving us liability for anything that happens other than the dock is with this ferry.
Can you tell me specifically what you're referring to?
Well, there was that accident up in Lake Champlain where people got hurt on this, we certainly had no supervision of this boat or the operator as to whether it's seaworthy, we don't know.
Well, he has insurance though and he's already submitted, so we wouldn't be responsible for that if that were to happen. He would, that's for his insurance.
You say that we wouldn't be responsible and hopefully you're correct as legal conclusion. I think maybe some language in here could beef that conclusion up, so if the issue ever arises.
13 doesn't do it.
What?
Paragraph 13 doesn't do it.
Let me just, did you, or do you want to talk to Warren about these changes or what do you want to do? I haven't had time to read it.
I'd like to vote on it though and then make the necessary changes. I feel like, like this is all stuff we've discussed, it's already late in the season. He wants to get started. I mean, if we can agree that it needs to be modified, we've done this with resolutions in the past and then we can work with Warren.
We'll be here, we'll be here tomorrow, why don't we just pass it tomorrow?
I'm not going to be here tomorrow and Jeff is waiting, so I mean, if we, if we can modify it like we've done with other resolutions and then, Joe, if you want to talk to Warren, I'll be happy to be part of that discussion. I'm sure Jeff would be very amenable to anything we want to do as far as protecting ourselves and I can certainly appreciate that, but I know it's very late in the season.
I'm not comfortable, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, I'm not comfortable voting on something. I just got this at four this afternoon.
Yeah, but Elizabeth, I understand what we talked about before, it's not new.
Can I finish?
Sure.
It's late, I, we got it late this afternoon. I have concerns, you can vote on what, if you want to vote on it, we have a motion on the floor. I would rather vote on it tomorrow after we go back to Warren, that's all I'm saying.
I don't even know if Warren would have answers tomorrow, but I feel like there's enough in here that we could vote on the general.
Fair enough.
Implementation of it and then make the necessary changes.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? Bruce?
The only other thing is in the last page, we have licensee, it's, it's wrong.
Where's that, the last page?
Where are they signed, signature page?
Which part is wrong?
Foster brother D.
It's not the right licensee.
Oh, the D, it's not our licensee, there's just a D.
Oh, misspelling?
It's just a misspelling. Then today. The D is just accidentally included.
Look, I can talk to Warren first thing tomorrow morning and see if he has any problem making these changes. You'd be able to beat it tomorrow and, and even if you're not here.
You guys can vote on it? That'd be great, okay.
We can add to the agenda, John.
Should we, should we table this?
Yeah, till tomorrow.
Should we get in touch with them?
What time is it? Tomorrow?
Six.
I can't, I'm going to New York City.
That's fine. We, do we have a quorum?
Yep, there's three of you.
Well, I don't know. I didn't know you weren't coming, I didn't know. Joe can come, you can come.
Yeah, right now. What time do you, I don't know when you're going to be back.
I get done at 4:30 at Center Street.
I'm not going to make it, you're not going to be here anytime soon.
Be here 7:30.
Eight, if you're lucky. Okay, we'll table this then. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the possible appointment of a particular person to a board.
Okay.
May I have a second? We'll be back. I think it was wide enough. We're, I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting again, you have a second?
A second.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Tremble to the planning board for a term expiring on 31st, 2021. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Melanie Moore, our acting planning board chair, as our chair of the planning board. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Thank you.
I want to be happy.
About we adjourn? Sorry, sorry, I didn't see you. Would you like to speak anyway?
Uh, probably.
Did you just get here?
I just got here.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
All right, everybody, thanks. Good night.